If the foundation is in place.
Whoa.
That's for sure. I learned that a few years ago. In the baseball. That's when I learned it. And I am, I am sure that. And in fact, you probably will get more of them because you're not taking them. Well, with all that I have.
I know.
I told Ryan to go back. It's just, I started focusing. You still like awakeness for you see sample proof? Is it still reconsidered if it gets accepted? I don't know how those weaknesses. It seems like they won't tell you. Yes. Now they're saying. Right, it's the June ones have acceptances to sample proof, Berkeley, Davis. I see your point. Oh yeah, now we got his, we got his package from one, in fact, he's getting a larger package. I would assume expenses are there.
Welcome everyone to the May fourteenth meeting, a city council meeting. We are happy to see you here this evening and if you could please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and then we have an invocation this evening? No. Okay, it's me. If you could please, um, just have an open mind this evening. Lord God, we just thank you so much for all of the beautiful things that you've given us in this wonderful city of San Marcos. The people, the, the beautiful scenery that we have, all the people that are getting educated and enjoying their lives, people that are retiring here, shopping here, enjoying meals with their friends. We just are so happy to be a community that is here and that we, um, and that we have wonderful people in it. And we would like to, um, this evening, remember to be guided peacefully through debate and that we're reminded that we're not only leaders, but we're all, we are also servants and that we, it is our responsibility to serve the common good. I pray, I pray that we would grant, be granted the wisdom and courage to know what to do is, and that it's good, right and true. That we will speak out in when it's time to speak out and listen patiently and respectfully when it is time to listen. May we always be guided by the spirit of community and the spirit of justice and by the spirit of love. Amen. Okay, next is our roll call. Mr. Scott.
Councilmember Musgrove?
Here.
Councilmember Nunez?
Present.
Councilmember Sennella?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Jenkins?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here. Okay, if the council could please join me out in front, we have a smile award and then a couple of other present, or proclamations.
I hope you can see me down here. Need to step still. So, um, as many of you know, um, each council member gives out what's called a smile award, which stands for, um, San Marcos Inspiration Leadership and Excellence Award. And so, um, this time my group is what's called San Marcos, let me get this right. San Marcos Candy Cane Lane and it is Lance Micas and Paul Nelson. Would you like to come down here? I'll just tell you a little bit about what they do and then, um, and then they'll speak a little bit. So they do this, started this amazing thing during the, you want me to come over here? Um, they started this amazing opportunity in San Marcos and their family is here too, some of them. Um, over off of, um, Crimson Rose, Rose Ranch. Um, they have started a candy cane lane. It started with three homes during the pandemic and it's now up to twenty-five. And it's the most amazing thing if you ever get a chance to take your kids or yourselves or even adults. Um, they have synchronized music, they have bubble snow, they have inflatables. It's, it's just the funnest thing ever. And so let me read to you, um, what this says here. With the smile award, San Marcos Inspiration Leadership and Excellence Award for their dedication to live our spirit of service value through the organization of San Marcos Candy Cane Lane. An annual holiday festivity that brings the community together with joy. Their partnership to host this holiday festivity has encouraged residents of San Marcos to strengthen their bond with one another and come together for a magical holiday experience. And I just want to share also that it's not only about San Marcos residents that go there, but they've become pretty well known and so you have a lot of, um, of people coming to watch it from outside of San Marcos. So they just really provide a lot of happiness and so I'm very excited to thank you for all of your efforts.
Thank you very much.
So you will each get one of these. You, on to say anything before we?
Well, we just wanted to thank the community for recognizing us. This was certainly not the reason why we started Candy Cane Lane. And I, I know Lance can, can speak for himself, but I think I can speak for both of us just when we say that this was certainly not the reason. But I, I brought my family here in two thousand and nine originally from Vista, born and raised in Southern California. And I can't, I can't think of a better place to live than San Marcos. So really appreciate the recognition and we're looking forward to the next year.
Yeah, and I'd also just like to say thank you. And, uh, you know, what really motivates us is when the, the kids come in their pajamas and their teddy bears and their moms like, oh, this is our third time here this week and the snow bubbles, they're just having so much fun. And, you know, we look at each other and like, this is so worth it every year and we just really enjoy it. And I also just wanted to thank, uh, San Marcos and the council for supporting me. As a result of this, I had spun up a new company called Plug Shields, uh, which protects extension cords during holidays, right? So mainly e-commerce driven, but, uh, without the help of San Marcos getting started with an LLC and the support of the, the local government and all your resources, uh, it would be very difficult. So I just want to say thank you for that as well. And we're already looking forward to getting started for this year. So I look forward to it.
Thank you. Do you want to come back here and get in the middle? Oh, let's bring your family up too. Yeah. You guys come up too.
We're just going to take a picture. We're going to wait for the family to come up. So whose family is?
This is my wife Karen. This is my son Brody. My son Matt, I mean, my daughter Matt.
This is my daughter Tragulina. This is my daughter Fumia. My wife unfortunately is at conference and she couldn't be with us.
Well, we're glad that you were joining today. No, just sharing how to get on the end.
Ready, one, two, three. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, sounds good. See you in December.
So just one quick comment on that. Um, you know, we have the spirit of service here in San Marcos. It's that special something that our community brings to the table. And, you know, especially in these days where electricity is so expensive that you, uh, that you definitely stepped up and made our community a little bit brighter. And yes, that's a pun. Uh, we really appreciate that. So thank you very much. Okay, next up is going to be National Water Safety Month. So unfortunately, this is not a good subject, but, um, it's something that, you know, definitely deaths are preventable, um, when you have a pool. So we are going to have our, um, our aquatics supervisor, recreation supervisor CJ Palmer with an, is it an Asia Quavis, our pool manager? No, it's not. Oh, it's Andrea Gonzalez, our, our parks cheerleader. This is what I call her because she's always such a cheerleader for parks. We're always trying to get new ones for you. So we're, we're always working on that. Um, anyway, um, the San Marcos City Council hereby recognizes National Water Safety Month. San Marcos' future depends on the long-term health, safety and wellness of its community of children and teens in our city. The individual and organized forms of aquatic-related recreation and creative use of free time are vital to the quality of life here in San Marcos and to our residents. Drowning is the single leading cause of death for children's ages one to four and the second leading cause of injury-related death for children up to fourteen in the United States, affecting not only the victims, but also their families, emergency personnel and the hospitals of our community as a whole. Drowning and aquatic-related injuries are preventable. Evidence-based strategies like the National Drowning Prevention Alliance's five layers of protection, which includes using barriers and alarms, adults and children learning basic swim and water competency skills, the use of life jackets around open bodies of water and the emergency preparation with CPR with rescue breaths will engage our community in water safety for all ages. During the month of May, the City of San Marcos led by Parks and Rec will educate our community in water safety for all ages. Therefore, we, the city council of the City of San Marcos, do hereby proclaim May twenty twenty-four as National Water Safety Month and urge all citizens of San Marcos to participate in the efforts to reduce the risk of drowning and other aquatic-related injuries. And I wanted to share one quick thing, real quick. I'm going to give this to you. Uh, when I had a pool in my backyard, we always had, and we were having a party, we always had a designated person that had a, um, yes, a very annoying whistle around their neck and they were designated. If someone was going to go to the bathroom, they had to have someone else help. It's, it's so easy to do and really we could prevent a lot of deaths that way. So anyway, did you have a couple of words you'd like to say? Go right ahead CJ.
It's great to meet everybody. I just came to the City of San Marcos a few weeks ago, um, after fifteen years of service with the City of Oceanside. So I'm excited to be here, excited to get our pools up and, yeah, let's move that up a little taller. No, got a lot of great staff for the summer, a lot of great support, a lot of new activities and fun things. So we're excited for the summertime.
All right, we'd like to have fun in San Marcos, right? Yes. Okay, we're going to take a quick picture.
Ready, one, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, now we have Darren Chamalk to come down. He is our, this is actually a really tough job. Um, Public Works. They're the ones that are out in the rain helping, uh, get the storm drains all cleared out so that we don't have backups and water in our, out in the rain. Yes, um, thank you for all you do. Um, anyway, the San Marcos City Council hereby recognizes the National Public Works Week. Public Works professionals focus on the infrastructures, facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health and quality of all, of life of all of the residents and businesses in the city. These infrastructures, facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are managers and employees at all levels of government and the private sector. They are responsible for rebuilding, improving and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential to all of our residents. It is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders and children of San Marcos to gain knowledge and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. This year is the sixty-fourth annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association slash a Canadian Public Works Association. We, the city council of the City of San Marcos, do hereby designate the week of May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth, that's next week, as National Public Works Week and we urge all citizens to join with, uh, representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, managers and employees and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protect our national health, safety and quality of life. Thank you very much Darren. And I'll get that to you. Did you have a few words you'd like to say?
Just thank you to, um, our council and the city manager for all the support that they give the public works department and the other staff. Um, our guys work really hard out in the field trying to make sure that the roads and parks and everything are the way that the residents want them. And I think they do a great job. So we appreciate the support.
Yes, thank you. All right, we're going to take a quick. All right, one more thing. Thursday, it's Bike Anywhere Day in San Diego County. And so the San Marcos City Council hereby, by the way, um, if you go on the San Doug website, there are stops all over the county. So if you are going, uh, to work, you're riding your bike or you're going to visit a friend or whatever, you can, there are lots of stops. We're going to have here, one here at City Hall. Hello, good to see you. Um, so we have here, uh, let's see, Kim Valdovinos? Good, all right. Um, our recreation coordinator. So, um, by the way, I did fail to mention all of the people that we hire in the Parks Department, they have to have fun. They like to have fun. It's a requirement. We ask them. No, I'm just kidding. Anyway, but I can tell you would like to have fun and I know you do. Anyway, uh, the month of May is National Bike Month and May sixteenth, this Thursday, is Bike Anywhere Day in the San Diego region. There are nearly eighteen hundred miles of bikeways in the San Diego region, making the San Diego region one of the best places to explore local communities and go by bike to the beach, park, school, work or a local restaurant. Biking is an emission-free and healthy transportation alternative for short car trips that reduces traffic congestion. And the Sandag, San Diego Association of Governments, is organizing Bike Anywhere Day on May sixteenth to encourage students, families, commuters, bike enthusiasts and people new to biking to replace a car trip with a bike trip and pledge to go by bike to an official pit stop, which is from seven AM at two ten AM on May sixteenth. And we, the city council of the City of San Marcos of California, do hereby commend and recognize May twenty twenty-four as Bike Two, uh, Bike Month and May sixteenth as Bike Anywhere Day and encourages everyone to go by bike this May and throughout the year. So if you're out and about and you want to go to bike, uh, there's going to be a nice little pit stop right in the parking lot in front. I'll be showing up, uh, as I try to every single year. Uh, but just be, so if you're out driving, please be careful of all the cyclists. It's really imperative that we keep them all safe. So did you have a few words you'd like to say? I'm going to get that to you. You're very welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to invite you all to stop by. We're going to be hosting a pit stop, like Rebecca said, right outside City Hall in the community center. We also have trek bikes with a tune-up, um, setup and we have lots of prizes, swag giveaways, um, snacks, drinks and lots of encouragement. Thank you. And we always enjoy having Mayor Jones stopping by and also some of our city council members right in that day. So thank you all. Good evening.
Thank you, thank you. One, one last thing I would like to mention. I forgot about trek bike being there. Uh, last year I, my handlebars were loose, so they actually did a little tune-up on my bike. And I, I did have a couple of issues, so, um, they, they, they did a great job. All right, moving on to our, um, consent calendar. I know there are three items that Deputy Mayor Jenkins would like to pull. That's ten, eleven and twelve. Are there any other council members that wish to pull any items? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Move to approve the balance.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Okay, um, council member, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Jenkins. I just called you council member. My apologies. Uh, okay, number ten.
Um, okay, number ten, I just want to let you know that since, um, I, um, live within a thousand feet of this, where the CFD is, that I will be abstaining and not participating.
I am too. I think I, oops, I think I am too, now that I think about it, because we live very close to one another, so.
Uh, we actually had a check done.
No.
And your name didn't come up.
Okay.
But if you think it is within a thousand feet.
No.
No, I think she's further.
If you checked, I just want to make sure because we're pretty close.
Deputy Mayor Jenk, Jenkins' property is nine hundred and eighty-four.
Okay. Well, then we're, then I'm good.
You're good.
I just would want to be cautious because I was like, oh gosh. Um, okay, well then I'll make a motion to approve this item. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then, uh, we have an abstain. We have one abstention. Any abstentions?
Yes.
Okay.
Jenkins.
Okay, item number eleven.
Yes, um, I asked to pull that, um, had some discussion with staff about the Humane Society agreement. And so, um, I'd like to know, I know there's been a couple instances where residents have had issues having, um, the Humane Society respond appropriately. Um, I think one of the calls, they didn't even know San Marcos was part of their, part of their work area. So I just want to know what we are doing to try to get this, um, under control because we spend, what is it, almost seven hundred thousand dollars? I think we should get our money's worth.
Yes, um, you are correct. We have had some service issues over the, the last several months with the Humane Society. Our customer experience manager is working directly with the staff at the Humane Society. She's also working in concert with some of the other agencies that contract with the Humane Society so that as a, a group in the region, we can try to affect some change.
Okay, good. Any further questions?
I'll move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any no votes? Okay. Um, and no abstentions, of course. Um, item number twelve.
Yes, um, I asked to approve that, uh, pull that also. Um, I know we're bringing some employees back in-house, uh, from outside contracted services. And so one of the things that we had talked about was, um, I just want to make sure that we're analyzing all of the costs, not just today's cost, but long-term costs, pension benefits, um, escalated costs and what this might be because, um, I just want to make sure we're making the right financial decision here.
Yes, thank you Deputy Mayor. Um, staff did a very comprehensive analysis on what the cost of renewing the contract might be. And of, of course, in, in every analysis without the actual contract renewal, we are taking a bit of a wag at estimating what the contract renewal cost will be. So when staff did this analysis, they assumed a thirty percent increase in cost. One of our neighbors recently got their bid back and at the moment we paid twenty-four dollars and seventy-two cents per curb mile for street sweeping. The neighbor's, uh, contract renewal came back at fifty dollars a curb mile, which is far in excess of what this analysis takes into account. We also have a, um, software system that is able to calculate the total compensation associated with in-house public employees. So it incorporates the benefits, the pensions and again, it's a wag. The actuarial science behind it is as good as it gets, but it assumes what adding employees might do to the unfunded per's liability in the future. Again, that will change depending on what the stock market does and what the rate of return is. But all of those factors were taken into account. Um, and with all of that baked in, there is still an estimated one million dollar savings over the course of ten years.
I just want to make sure that we're looking at it because there's a lot of agencies, I know we're doing it at North County Transit, bringing back in con, removing contracts and bringing the employees back in, um, because they're more effective because the contracts have gotten out of control. So, um, I just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing. And also, if you could address, um, about the addition of the mechanic for, for these vehicles?
Yes, so the analysis, um, takes into account two full-time maintenance, um, operators of the street sweepers, which clearly makes sense. We will be leasing two street sweepers and have two additional employees to operate those street sweepers. In the analysis, we added a mechanic as well. The mechanic, because street sweeping is such a high maintenance endeavor, given the fact that it, the machine goes around eight out of nine hours in the shift and picks up strange objects um, that go into the machines. So there is significant preventative maintenance and long-term maintenance. While it's a lease, it's not like our white fleet lease. The maintenance is done in-house. It's not done as part of the lease. So there will be daily maintenance that's performed and there will be ongoing maintenance in order to get the ten-year lifespan out of the machines that we're hoping to accomplish. That said, that high maintenance for a piece of equipment won't take more than about thirty percent of an additional mechanic is the estimate. However, currently we're running very lean on mechanics, which is causing a backlog in the work that we're supposed to perform. While we have been able to outsource a lot of our mechanic work through the enterprise lease that is very, um, affordable and benefits the city, we are starting to focus primarily on the fire equipment and we're not servicing some of the larger pieces of equipment as often as we would like in, in the, the yard. So the goal is to bring on an additional mechanic that may or may not be certified to work on fire equipment when they are first hired. We would like to create a much stronger bench that can begin to take on more of the fire equipment maintenance. Every time we send anything, um, that is a fire equipment, a piece of fire equipment to one of our contractors, it's very, very expensive. So the goal would be to bring somebody additional on. It's part of this analysis, so there's. It's part of this analysis, so there's still a cost savings. And it's not quantifiable yet, but over time, we're hoping to save even more money by having this mechanic take on some of the work that we would otherwise outsource for the fire department.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, Michelle, for a little bit more color around the analysis that took place on this. Another question I have, it's probably a little bit harder to quantify, and I'm sorry if I kind of surprised you by this, but can you talk a little bit, you know, street sweeping is so important just to have clean streets for our residents, but also just as important is to keep our stormwater systems clean. How do you quantify, or how did that analysis capture some, you know, getting better value by bringing this internal? Having better controls, that kind of stuff?
Yes, we're anticipating that this will improve service. These are going to be our employees. I think this is going to be a highly sought-after position within the department. And I think we're going to have some of our best employees applying for the position. Our employees, as you well know, they really take ownership of the city. So, the storm drain incident that occurred, catastrophe was avoided, because one of our staff was driving by and just felt like the road wasn't behaving as it should. And by pulling over and taking a closer look, they were able to identify that we had a storm drain collapsing. And we cordoned off the street before somebody drove into a situation. With that level of accountability, risk management, and customer service at play, they're going to be taking ownership as they do their routes. So, we've had challenges where we've had a complaint, and we go out and we notice that it's very clear that repeatedly, the street sweeper has gone around a tree limb, because it was in the right-of-way. But nobody followed up to let anybody know, there's a tree limb in the right-of-way. Instead, we'll just go around it next week, too. That's not going to happen with one of our in-house personnel who really takes ownership and pride in the city. So, we're hoping to see an elevated level of service for a lower cost.
Great, thank you, Michelle.
Well, and too, you know, when we have a situation where there have been, for instance, like cars parked on the side of the road, and we notice that there's an issue and it needs to, you couldn't see it when the cars were there, you know, unfortunately, people still change their oil in the street and things like that. So, for us, I think it will also help us make sure our streets are better, because we definitely don't want our cyclists to experience anything like that. And we definitely want to keep, and one of the things I think we do well is keep our city clean. So, I think we do that very well. So, I'm really excited about that. And then I just wanted to mention one other thing, and that's about when you said the analysis. I, you know, since Michelle started our city manager last year, she's made it a priority to best value analysis pretty much everything. And so, that, you know, I think it gives me a lot of peace of mind, knowing that we are spending our money wisely. I mean, this is something that I've actually, I'm a board member at Sandec, and I was just mentioning this to our interim CEO, that things like best value analysis should be done on a regular, ongoing basis, so that we know we're spending money wisely. We know that we are getting the best value, and we're doing the best job possible. So, I'm glad that we're doing that, and I just wanted to give you kudos for that, Michelle.
Thank you. Credit to Tostoff, they're certainly taking a look at everything.
Yes, okay. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve item 12.
Okay, I'll second that. A motion and a second, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Any noes? Okay, all right, motion passes unanimously. We will be moving on to oral communications. We have a few speakers that we will be hearing this evening. So, we're going to start out with Alan Geraci, Joanne Harris Malone, sorry, Chris Freeman, and then followed by Marlene Walder.
Good evening, Councilwoman, Mayor, Staff, Alan.
Oh, sorry, could you turn, could you pull that over? Sorry, I have never remembered to do that.
Is that better?
Yes, much better, thank you.
Well, good evening, Councilwoman, Mayor, Staff. I rise today to talk to you about, in the spirit of all the recognition and honors that you bestowed upon the community today, I'm here as the past president of the San Marcos Rotary Club, and as such, I am their ambassador. And we're coming to the conclusion of our fiscal year. And as the chairperson of the Youth Services Committee, I wanted to focus and give you a report of all the things that the San Marcos Rotary Club has accomplished this year. First of all, I'll just mention our mission. Rotary is a global network of 1.4 million neighbors, friends, leaders, and problem solvers who see a world where people unite and take action to create lasting change across the globe, in our communities and in ourselves. Indeed, we are people of action. So, this year, we've had a really, really successful year, especially for youth services. We started the year by putting in a peace poll at Mission Hills High School and had a ceremony. Superintendent was there, principal was there, teachers were there, the Interact Club was there. And it was really highly regarded, so much that San Marcos High School contacted me and said, "When are we getting one of those?" So, I've made it my mission for this year to make sure they get one. It's ordered, and we're hopeful to get it installed, if not by the end of the school year, then by the beginning of the next term, with the Interact Club members leading that ceremony. If you're not aware, Interact is the high-school version of Rotary. We sponsor Interact Clubs at both high schools, and it's been highly successful the last two years. We have over 40 members, high school students, that are participating at Mission Hills High School and San Marcos High School in our Interact Club. In October, we had our fundraiser, which is a golf tournament. Some of you participate in that. And we raised sufficient funds to get over $7,500 to the Boys and Girls Club as a result of that fundraiser. So, thank you for all of you that participated in that. In October, we sent nine eighth graders to our LEAD, which is Leadership, Education, and Development Camp, that happens at Quyamaca Camp. And they participate, they come out with a certificate, and we have a luncheon and ceremony to congratulate them and their parents for their accomplishment. Come the first of the year, in January and February, we do our literacy program, where we read books to first graders in both English and Spanish. And that is one of our favorite things to do. We had success in all of our elementary schools this year. We also were able to accomplish a speech and debate competition, where we sent two San Marcos High School students onto the district level. They went on to the quarterfinals, and I'm hopeful next year, we can get them all the way. We had a music competition, where both high schools participate in a music contest, and we had 11 participants. Our saxophone player went on to the district finals, which is San Diego County and Imperial County, and won. So, our San Marcos High School saxophone player won the music competition. Last month, we sent 11 students, 11th grade students, to Ryla, which is Rotary Youth Leadership Awards at Idlewild Camp. And they came back with stories like we hadn't heard before. So, we had a luncheon last week, and they reported all their fun and activities and all the speakers, and the 11 students were amazingly successful. Finally, we're going to be doing our scholarship awards. We actually picked nine students from Mission Hills High School, San Marcos High School, Palomar College, and Cal State to receive $1,000 awards that we'll be granting this Thursday at the Spaghetti Factory. So, I just wanted to say in conclusion that your San Marcos Rotary Club is working for the community, and indeed, we are people of action.
Thank you. Next up is Julianne Harris Malone, followed by Chris Freeman, and then Marlene Walder. Marlene Walder, my apologies.
Good evening. Thank you, first of all, all of you, for your very mindful governance. And it's clear to me, as an interested observer and resident of San Marcos, that all of you care so much about San Marcos and have the best heart and interests of those of us that live here. So, thank you, and to the staff as well. So, Joanne Harris Malone, and I'm here as a happy resident of San Marcos, as well as a concerned member of the Budget Review Committee. Even though the sales tax proposal is not on the agenda tonight, I wanted to register an early and strong reminder and endorsement for the urgency and importance of your support in placing that measure on the ballot. So, I'm a homegrown San Marcos resident. I went to local public schools here a long, long, long time ago, elementary, junior, high, and high school. My family's been involved in the community for a long, long time. I was actually thinking, sitting back there, again, a long time ago, I was on the youth commission back when we met over in Portables, over where the senior center is. So, San Marcos has come a long way. Anyway, I left after high school and moved up north and went to school and raised my family and worked, and returned back here five years ago. And it's just been such a pleasure to be back and participate and call San Marcos my home again. So, since my return, I'm getting involved in the community, and I'm on the Budget Review Committee. And I've taken a deep dive into the financial situation, not that I'm an expert, but I've wanted to learn. So, in addition to the budget meetings, I've attended the city's budget workshop, where the staff has been amazing at the best value analysis and providing incredible analysis as to where we are, why we're there, and what we can do. The presentation to the City Council in March from the Sales Tax Consultant regarding the feasibility of the measure, which was, you know, very favorable. And then, as part of the Budget Review Committee, we've heard presentations from all of the heads of the different, you know, pieces of the pie of the city. And I can say without hesitation that while San Marcos is a beautiful place to call home, it's clear that the city is facing very significant fiscal challenges when it comes to funding all of our important services. And I know you guys all know this. I just had to come and tell you that I know it, and I want you to know how important it is. And without taking action, as you know, too, those things aren't going to go away, and they're going to multiply dramatically. So, in order to maintain our amazing fire and safety that we have here and enjoy so much, and I have been a recipient of the incredible turnaround time of our local fire agency personally, and my family truly life-saving, maintaining our parks, which I know you guys enjoy, I do too. I see some of you out there on the parks, I love them. And improving our roads, and importantly, also funding the infrastructure to keep our city going and maintaining all of this. So, I just close by encouraging, of course, your support when it comes to you later this year, after we present the budget, in supporting, putting it on the ballot, so the residents can say, yes, we believe in San Marcos, and we want to make a change to ensure its future, to have the beautiful city that we love and call home. So, thanks again for your service and for letting me speak my mind.
Thank you, Joanne. Next up is Chris Freeman, followed by Marlene Walder.
Hello, good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members. Chris Freeman, I'm also a proud member of the Budget Review Committee. I just wanted to take 30 seconds to reiterate our support for putting this sales tax measure on the ballot. Local sales taxes are nothing new. Cities have been using this to supplement their property tax revenues for years. Over half the cities in San Diego County already have a local sales tax, and half of those that don't are assumed to be putting one on the ballot this November. So, it's the right thing to do for San Marcos. It's local control over these dollars. We get frustrated when there are state, unfunded state mandates or other entities that are trying to use our tax dollars. So, these dollars are locally controlled and overseen by an oversight committee that will be determined. I also wanted to share a personal experience. I work for the city of Oceanside. In 2018, voters in Oceanside approved Measure X, which was their, is their local sales tax revenue. We've been able to do amazing things with that money. We built a very robust EMT program that has fueled a bench for our firefighters. We use those dollars to design and construct Fire Station 1, which is going to open next month. We use that money for homeless outreach. We use that money for coastal work. We use that money for road repairs. And what's important is, we use that money for the things that they said they were going to do with the money before it was voted upon. Two weeks ago, Oceanside went to their Citizens Oversight Committee, and they let them know that they've recently polled, using True North, the same company that San Marcos uses, and they need to reapprove Measure X on the November ballot. And it polled at 72% approval, and it's bipartisan support. GOP voters were over 60% approval of voting again to renew Measure X. So, I'm looking forward to turning the corner and having council vote to put this on the ballot, so that we can get out and start to educate folks on why this is a good, positive thing for San Marcos. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Next up, Marlene Walder.
Hello, City Council, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers, Staff. I'm Marlene Walder. I just kind of wanted to wrap up on the rent for our park, San Marcos Mobile Estates. It was kind of done underhandedly. The gentleman who is our president did not want to work with one of our residents who was doing the appeal. And he sent out a ballot, which I had given to you the week before. I don't remember the date, unfortunately, but it was after the first of the month, or right there at the first of the month. I don't remember when the city, no, the city council's the second week. So, it had to be the third week, I guess. Second and fourth Tuesday, when I gave it to you. That came in our mail. We didn't have to vote on it until the Friday. Before the Friday was up, or Saturday morning, he never told any of the residents what the results were. We got a letter in the mail and said that the people approved the new rent increase, and yet, we were not told about it. And they said, "The new bill will be in the mail," and it came that following Monday or Saturday. I do not know when it came. Oh, I'm sorry. The notice came in the mail on Saturday, and the rent was put up onto our mailboxes on Monday. It just didn't seem like they could have got the rent and the paperwork corrected in that short of a time if he had waited for the residents to put their vote in or find out. We were never informed, and I know I was told that he was voted president, but he was not willing to work with the other residents. And on top of that, which, that ends that, because that, we did the increase. But our pool now has been broken again. And so, the streets weren't addressed, the pool wasn't addressed, the heater went out, and now they're waiting, because it's a guaranteed part that they put in last year, I guess, when it broke. The jacuzzi might be fixed, I'm not sure, because it's the heater that broke. So, maybe the jacuzzi's not working again. They did not get that fixed until after the rent was completed. It's just that they know that the city council has no push or impetus in helping the residents, and it almost seems worthless. The owner had approached someone, I guess Mike, that if we would go away from rent control, they would guarantee us for the next 10 years, 3%. They were willing to do 3%, but yet, the residents never heard, never were asked, nothing. And we ended up with 3.9%. And that's basically it, and you won't have to be hearing me, but I will come to the city council meetings. Thank you.
Hey, Marlene, just to clarify, when you said the owner met with a mic, it wasn't me.
Oh, no, no, sorry, no. It was our HOA president, Mike.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's just that John was very upset, and so I brought that other letter. I don't know if I had given it out to you, council members, but the letter that he sent to us as residents, none of us understood what he was asking for. And he wasn't... And he wasn't even asking for it, he had already made the agreement with the park owner. And so we were just, after the fact, found out about it. And I'm not sure what date I had made phone calls to bug you guys, but then the next two days, we started getting that the owner already knew about it, and the letter didn't even go out to all the residents. The letter went out to the residents, what Mike wrote, but it, oop, it didn't have a deadline till the Friday. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Marlene. Okay, next up, new business, Resolution 2024-9290 and SMPFA 2024-14 authorizing special tax refunding bonds for certain improvement areas of community facilities District 9901, which is Santa Lejos Hills, and other actions in connection therewith. Do we, there we, we do, we have a staff presentation. Good to see you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. Tonight, I'll be discussing a potential refinancing opportunity of the special tax revenue refunding bond for 17 improvement areas in the city's CFD 99-01 in Santa Lejos Hills. First, I'd like to acknowledge the refinancing team that is comprised of Michelle, myself, and Jeffrey Jorgensen with the city as issuer, Bond Counsel Munal Shaw, Jennifer Bradley, John Rotshaffer with Best Besson Krieger, Disclosure Counsel Brian Forbath, Lawrence Chan with Stradling, Yoka, Carlson, and Roth, Municipal Advisor Jim Fabian and Chelsea Redman with Fieldman Rollup and Associates, Special Tax Consultant Mitch Mosesman and Jennifer Harris with 3360 Public Finance, and Underwriters Sarah Brown and Luke Zepiel with Stiefel Nicolás and Company. The refinancing would generate proceeds from the sale of the bonds that would be used to refinance the 20.5 million in outstanding principal for the prior bonds issued by the San Marcos Public Financing Authority in October 2014 for about 32.4 million. The 2014 bond was issued with an average rate of 4.7%. Despite the rising interest rates in the mortgage and private loan market, current conditions show lower rates in the municipal bond financing market, with an anticipated interest cost estimated at about 3.2% for the current bond. As such, the potential bond refunding opportunity could result in a total savings of approximately 1.5 million to taxpayers in the 17 affected improvement areas across about 1,500 residential parcels, with an average savings per parcel of about 1,000. Actual savings will be determined based on the rate at the time it's refinanced, and the property owners will be notified of the final savings amount prior to the 2024-25 property tax bill from the county. The potential Financing Authority bond was presented to stand in standard and pores on May 1st, and recently received a stable rating of A+ by S&amp;P. The highlighted areas on this map represent the 17 effective improvement areas in the CFD. And upon review of the map, it appears that no members of the city council own property within 999 feet of the 17 affected CFD 99-1 improvement areas. CFD 99-01 is located in Santa Lejos Hills, which is a master-planned community in the southern portion of the city, with approximately 1,920 acres, and was developed with planned permits for up to about 3,400 dwelling units. It has 13 acres of neighborhood commercial uses, schools, and other public uses, and about 1,100 acres of public parks and open and recreation space. The 17 improvement areas and related subdivisions that would be affected by the bond refunding are part of CFD 99-01, which has a total of 1,526 residential parcels that have all been constructed and sold to individual property owners, and would generate the special tax revenue to secure the bonds. The proposed financing structure is that the San Marcos Financing Authority would issue about 17.2 million in special tax revenue refunding bonds, of which the proceeds will be used to purchase and refinance the special tax refunding bonds for the 17 improvement areas and include the costs of issuance. The debt service reserve fund will be held by the bond trustee, and as such, can be used to pay debt service on the bonds if needed. The bond term will not be extended, so the final debt service payment will remain at September 2038. After the bonds are paid off, special taxes will no longer be levied for the bond related to the 17 affected improvement areas of CFD 99-01. However, special taxes for other non-bonded service CFDs that are currently being levied in perpetuity will remain. As earlier mentioned, the bonds will be secured by the special taxes levied in the 17 improvement areas, and affected property owners will be notified of the final savings amount prior to the 2024-25 property tax bill from the county. And no additional bonds will be issued, as the bonds end only a few years after the 10-year period for an optional redemption. As mentioned, the S&amp;P rating of A+ was recently received just a few days ago on May 10th. Tonight, staff is requesting for approval of the proposed refinancing and related documents. If approved, pricing would occur on May 30th, and the bonds would close on June 18th. This concludes the presentation. Our Municipal Advisor James Fabian, Bond Counsel Munal Shaw, and Special Tax Consultant Mitch Mosesman are also in attendance tonight, and we'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. So, just for clarification, this is our, since my time on the council, since 2010, this is our fourth, I'm sorry, we have had four, this is our, this would be our fifth refinance. But I did have one question. We try to do it whenever possible, so we're always talking about best value for our, what we're paying. We also are looking out for the best value of our citizens if there is an opportunity for us to refinance, and we would save a little bit of money. We always are up to do that, so that's, that's a good job. Now we have another one, which I wasn't even sure, because the interest rates have been so, so volatile. I do have one quick question. So the $1,000 per household, that is over the lifetime of the CFD, I'm assuming, correct?
Correct.
Yes, okay, so, and the last payment is in September of 2038, I think?
Correct.
Okay, so $1,000 is better than a poke in the eye, as my parents used to say. Thank you, thank you for the hard work on this, Donna. Really appreciate that we are always looking out and, you know, checking our, our CFDs and making sure we're doing the right thing. Yes, Council Member?
Thank you, Mayor, and I echo your comments. And we refinanced some of our debt and bonds at Vallesitos when I was there, when we had an opportunity to save money and pass that along to the rate payer. So this is just simply a very smart move, and I think it's a win, a big win for those that are paying this in Santa Lejos Hills. So thank you, Donna, for, and your team, for all the work that you put towards this. Logistically speaking, I know the mayor mentioned that, you know, that the average of about $1,000 per household savings, is that going to be reflected on the property tax bills in a, from a percentage standpoint? Or is that going to be more of a hard dollar discount, for lack of a better way to describe it?
The property tax bills will reflect a flat dollar amount, however, the letter to notify the property owners will detail what the reduced amount would be.
Okay, great, thank you. And, and just, I know the answer to this, but just to get it out on the record, we're refinancing this bond, but we are not extending the term of the bond, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, Council Member Musgrove.
Just real quickly, Donna, the, the amount will be fixed, since the bond rate is fixed for the term between 2024-2038. So the letter will identify individually to the property owners what the reduction will be, and then they can extrapolate that number based on the number of years remaining.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Jenkins.
Two questions. So this closes on June 18th. This might be down in the weeds, but when does the county assessor need to know this is happening? Because the bills, as of July 1, I know they don't come out until later, but is there a drop dead date when we have to notify them that this has happened?
Yes, annually, we submit the property tax roll by August 10th, so it'll be part of that deadline submittal.
Okay. And then my other question is, I think you had said in 2014, the rate was 4.7%? Is that correct? And then the new proposed rate, depending on what happens on the pricing date, right, would be possibly 3.2?
Correct.
So I thought I had heard somewhere along the way that there had to be a 3% difference, to make it worthwhile?
Yes, so our policy that we have, the city council's debt issuance management and post-compliance policy, has a threshold of a 3% net present value saving 3.2.
You're talking about a different number. Okay, yeah, I think that's it. I mean, this is a great thing for our residents. And we also, I think I know the answer to this, but I got to ask it, when we do this, you also factor in the cost, because it's quite expensive to do this. All of that cost is factored in?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other further discussion? Nope. Okay, let's see, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move to adopt the resolution, Mayor.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion, and then a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? Seeing none? Okay, next up, Safe San Marcos Program Authorization and Association, Associated Direction and Authorization Concerning Funding and Use of License Plate Readers. Do we have a, yep, they're on their way up. And our Sheriff's Department, just for clarification, I don't know that during my time on the city council, being that we have such a low crime rate, I don't think you've ever presented at a city council meeting up on the dais like this. So this, my 18th year in office, I don't think I've ever seen this, so this is pretty remarkable this evening. Something good must be coming forward.
We're happy to be here. Well, good evening, Mayor, Council, staff, and members of the community. My name is Christopher Lawrence, I'm a captain with the Sheriff's Department, currently assigned to the Major Crimes Division. And I'm here to present to you two opportunities. The sheriff is hopefully aligning with the contract cities and unincorporated areas to enhance public safety. The first is automated license plate recognition cameras, and the second is the Safe Cities Program. So first off, ALPRs, Automated License Plate Recognition Cameras, an overview for you of what they are. They are high-speed, computer-controlled camera systems. They contain optical character recognition technology to read license plates. They can read metal license plates in addition to paper license plates. And the vendor that we have chosen to go with is known as Flock. One of the exciting abilities that they have as well is what's called fingerprint technology. So they are able to identify different vehicles that it's reading and not just license plates. So if a missing persons, for instance, is last seen in a Honda Accord, we can search that database for a Honda Accord, and it'll, it'll take us right to a particular vehicle that we're looking for. They communicate with law enforcement databases, CLETS, the California Law Enforcement Telecommunication System, to aid investigations, giving us alerts to wanted vehicles, or again, missing persons. And when an alert is received, the end user is notified either via email, text message, or however else we have an alerting system set up as designated by the station commander. Again, Flock Safety is the company that we have partnered with, and we would be utilizing their Falcon II cameras. Each camera is able to cover two lanes of traffic, 65-foot range, proficient at capturing images up to 70 miles an hour. They operate in all weather, and they are solar-powered, so there's no electrical infrastructure needed on behalf of the city, which also means that any given time, as an investigation or crime trends change within the city, these locations can change where these devices are maintained. And in worst-case scenario for us, if a decision is made that the program is no longer needed or necessary, it's easy to remove, and there's no damage to infrastructure that's existing or alterations that need to take place. On the right, I have displayed on the screen what a read actually looks like. We've blurred out the license plate for anonymity. As you can see, it's the rear of the vehicle, date, time, location, direction of travel, and again, the license plate, and that is all the information that is collected. Within that information, no PII or personal identifying information is obtained from the driver of the vehicle, the owner of the vehicle, whoever may be in the vehicle. And the distance of the camera is such that we're not able to tell who is in the vehicle as well. It's incumbent upon the investigator, once an image like this is used, to figure that out on their own. This is just a tool, a force multiplier, to aid investigators in the course of their So again, the benefits. This is a force multiplier for law enforcement agencies. In a time when it's difficult to hire individuals that are qualified and interested in law enforcement, at a time when law enforcement is expensive, and expansion of additional deputies or officers is almost impossible for cities due to the cost, this is a low-cost solution that can help, again, aid the public safety of any given city or jurisdiction. They aid in detection of not only wanted and missing persons, but they provide deputies with, again, those real-time alerts. And so a lot of the focus you may hear in the news and the media is the focus on stolen vehicles, as we do get live, real-time alerts when a stolen vehicle is scanned by one of these cameras. But more importantly, these aid in Amber Alerts, Missing Persons, Feather Alerts, Ebony Alerts, Silver Alerts, you name it, these are very critical and important in getting people home when they're at risk, and, you know, potentially saving a child's life as they're in the hands of someone who should not be caring for them. They increase our investigative abilities for detectives, again, in those cases previously mentioned. I was previously the station commander for the North Coastal Station. Those include the cities of Encinitas, Solana Beach, Del Mar, and the area of Rento, Santa Fe. In the six months, first six months that we had these cameras in Encinitas, our investigators were able to achieve a 5% increase in their case closure rate, which any increase is significant, but 5%, that may sound like a known low number, but that is hundreds of cases that they're able to bring to resolution that they wouldn't able, wouldn't be able to without these cameras. And that was a direct correlation of having these cameras available in that jurisdiction. And that was only with seven cameras in that large city. They, again, increase our detective case closure rate, and they enhance the public safety by agency collaborations, and I'll get into that later. So currently, ALPRs are being used throughout the region, and they have been used throughout the region since at least 2010. The cities on the left, which have their own police departments, minus the Sheriff's Department at the bottom, are all currently using license plate reader technology. Your neighbors to the west, Carlsbad, have over 100 cameras in their city. Chula Vista signed on recently with Flock, and they will have over 150. Coronado, El Cajon, Escondido, La Mesa, Oceanside, and the city of San Diego, most recently signed a contract with Flock, and they will have over 500 cameras in their city to enhance their public safety services. With the Sheriff's Department, our contract cities, we currently have, again, Del Mar, Encinitas, Poway, and Solana Beach are all utilizing the Flock ALPR system, and we've had nothing but success with that usage. One of the major concerns that anyone has, myself included, the sheriff included, is data sharing and privacy. So the Sheriff's Department, we are Senate Bill 34 compliant, and one of the caveats to that Senate bill is this presentation right now. This is a, a daylighting of this project. Nothing is done in secrecy. We make sure that the community is very well aware of what the initiatives that we are trying to enhance their public safety with. And we have a robust policy and procedure, which is located in 6.130 and is available on our forward-facing website. Anyone can read, and that goes into who has access, when they have access, based on the training that's available to them, how they're able to use the system, what the data may be utilized for, the retention, the sharing, and again, the overall privacy. So currently, the sheriff has decided that no other law enforcement So, currently, the sheriff has decided that no other law enforcement agency will have access to our Flock ALPR data, so we are not currently sharing with anyone. If, in the future, it is decided that we are able to share, it would only be with local California law enforcement agencies, so either state, county, or city agencies. We are prohibited by California law, the California Values Act, from sharing any of this data with the federal government, so it cannot be used for immigration investigations. It cannot be used for outside investigations from other states related to abortion investigations. This is, again, only for state and local law enforcement in California's use. Again, currently, we're not sharing with anyone. Audits are conducted every year to verify proper use, and that's through our CLETS administrator, works at the Communication Center. That individual is responsible for maintaining logs and records related to the use. And ALPR data, by law, is kept for a maximum of one year. However, with Flock, we made it even more restrictive. We are only keeping that data for 30 days, unless, and that's why the asterisk is up there, unless the information that we find in that system is related to a current criminal investigation, we're able to pull that data, attach it to the criminal investigation, and it is saved for perpetuity until the court process is done, and then that data is, again, trashed. So, none of the data that does not result in a criminal investigation is maintained past 30 days. The current pricing for Flock cameras is $3,000 per camera per year. And if we are utilizing city infrastructure, it's a one-time installation fee per camera of $150. Now, if city infrastructure cannot be used and a new pole is needed to be installed, then the installation price would go up, but I'm sure we would be able to figure out places where there are sufficient infrastructure to keep that price very low. This allows me to get into the next initiative, and this is the Sheriff's Safe Cities Initiative. So, this is an opportunity for community members, businesses, other governmental entities to partner with the Sheriff's Department in sharing video data. And as you can see from the screen, this is a two-part program that I'll get into here. Two parts, again, registered users and exclusive users. So, a registered user, these are individuals that have, or businesses, that have CCTV or IP cameras on their homes for that security, and they're allowed, or able to register with the software that we use, and it essentially places the location of their camera on a Google overlay map. So, our investigators are able to go in after the fact of a crime, open up the software, see where cameras are in proximity to where the actual crime occurred, and reach out to the individuals who own and operate those cameras via a built-in email system, saying, "This is Detective Smith with the Sheriff's Department. We're investigating a petty theft that occurred on this date between this time. We're looking for any information that you can provide us via your video system in relation to a suspect that may be wearing a white hat, white shoes." And the individual that owns that camera, again, receives an email. They're able to go into their, or we encourage them to go into their video system themselves, attempt to locate that, and if they do, they're able to share us a portion of their video via a link, and it's sent digitally to the investigator to increase efficiency and effectiveness of the investigator not having to go out into the field and do canvases, knocking on doors where people may not be home. We're able to reach out to individuals that have already registered with us and are part of this program. The second portion is exclusive users. We don't have many of those, but it is an opportunity for people to allow us access to their live camera systems where it only faces public areas. We're not interested in seeing anyone's backyards or inside their homes. This would be a Ring camera that faces the street. This would be a bank whose camera faces a parking lot, a school whose camera faces a parking lot or a main street, so on and so forth. This is for real-time situational awareness of law enforcement as it relates to a real-time crime center, which is what we're attempting to go to in the future with each of our cities to, again, enhance the public safety of residents, to get information real-time on crimes, and not only to just enhance safety, but make our response to certain calls more efficient. Oftentimes, we get calls from individuals that don't have a law enforcement background. They don't necessarily know what a dispatcher or a deputy wants to know as they're responding to a call, and information may be exaggerated or underplayed. And if there is a camera with a live feed in the area, whoever's been designated to view those cameras is able to hear the radio call come out, bring up the camera where the location of interest is, the crime is occurring, and verify what's being told to the dispatcher versus what's being seen on the screen, and be able to real-time either push additional resources to that problem, or we can scale back if it's something that's not necessarily drastic is being reported. Some of the benefits I've already gone over, but again, to the city, it's enhanced safety, potential for crime reduction, and more efficient law enforcement services. For businesses, it's to improve customer safety, affordable security solution. The owner can monitor the camera system from anywhere, and it directly impacts crime in the community. For the community themselves, it's collaboration with law enforcement so that there's ownership and stakeholder-ness within their own community, and contribute to a proactive problem-solving within your communities. And for law enforcement, again, improve officer safety, increase our situational awareness, shorten investigation cycle, and gain insight into unreported crimes. This is a portion of what the clearance system is, the software that I spoke of. When a detective logs in, they're able to see an overlay of the city via Google Maps, and the icons that you see are partnered businesses and residences that have registered and told us that they have cameras there, that they're willing to share with us when necessary. And we can, again, click on the icon, make a request to the owner for any video information that we seek to solve a case, and it's all done at the desk of the detective. The final piece of this program is overt cameras that are placed in concerning areas, high-crime areas potentially of the city, that, again, allow a live view for deputies or someone sitting in that real-time crime center of what's going on within a particular community. And again, this is, this would all be done through community outreach, both virtually and in person, multiple languages. Nothing would be put up without the approval of the council, of course, and then working with the communities. These are very overt. We want people to know where they are as a tool for crime reduction. These are already being used in the cities of Santee, Poway, Lemon Grove, and again, San Marcos, you're looking at it now. One great success story that we had in Lemon Grove is, one of these cameras is positioned at Berry Street Park, and an unfortunate homicide occurred right underneath one of these cameras. One of the bad things about that case is the camera was not recording. The city elected not to record. It was a live feed only, so we lost the information that would have been kept via the recording, but we had some situational awareness for the responding deputies and how they were able to respond to that incident and eventually apprehend the suspects. So, again, the option is for the city to either record or not. We would recommend the recording. Again, it's only kept for 30 days, and then it's looped over and rewritten, and so the potential for privacy concerns is very much like the Flock system previously mentioned to protect, first, protect your privacy rights, essentially. The Safe Cities cameras that we're just seeing, there is no cost to the city. That's a sheriff initiative. We build those in-house. Our detectives do at no cost to the city, and we're able to supply San Marcos with five, if you choose to go that route. The exclusive user, as mentioned, where individuals give us access to their live feed. Depending on the system that they have, the service is free. If they don't have a system that is compatible with a clearance database, they're notified thereof and given the opportunity to upgrade to a different system or switch over to being registered user only, which we would be more than happy to at least have that information. And with that, that concludes the presentation. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Christopher. I have a couple of, well, I actually have three speakers, so I think we'll hear from the speakers, and then maybe we could ask our questions instead of, okay, with the council? Okay. All right, first speaker is going to be Lindsay Smith. She's from the San Alejo Hills Community Association. Elliot Herman, also with the San Alejo Community Association, and then Melissa Bustard, also with the San Alejo. Hello, Lindsay.
Hi, how are you?
So, anyway, you're first up. You've got five minutes.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Mayor Jones and City Council members, like the mayor introduced myself, I'm Lindsay Smith, President of the San Alejo Hills Community Association. Our board unanimously voted in favor of our directors to speak in front of you this evening, representing our community. We are in huge favor of this initiative for San Alejo as well as the rest of San Marcos. The, their presentation was so thorough that I was going to hit on some of those points. So many of the other neighboring communities in North County are already using this technology, and I would hate to see San Marcos be the laggard in this sort of situation, because then I feel like it makes us more of the target. You know, it's an easier place for criminals to come and commit crimes. It has a lower crime-solving rate because they don't have the efficiency of this technology. My family is a huge law enforcement family. My dad, my uncle, my aunt, and hearing about the situational awareness of the, that the cameras can offer, I think, is huge at a time, especially when they mention that it's difficult to recruit, not only in quantity but quality, officers and deputies. I think having these sorts of tools that make their job safer is going to be huge, not only for our community, but also for them to recruit candidates worthy of us having on our streets to protect us. So, we would just like to urge you to approve this initiative. We think it's great for the community, and thank you for your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Elliot Herman.
I'd like to thank Rebecca, Mayor Jones, and the City Council for addressing this situation and hopefully approving it. I want to say that I've been an advocate for this, for San Alejo. San Alejo has a kind of unique situation in that there's only three ways in and out. So, if anything happens in San Alejo, you've either leave through Twin Oaks, San Alejo Road, or you leave through Quest Haven Park, through Quest Haven. The, we, as a long-term member of the board, I can't tell you how many times people have come to the board to say, "This happened on our street, and I've got it on my Ring camera that it was whatever the car was. Is there anything we can do about this?" And, other than just to spread the word that this has happened, there's really not very much that we can do. However, we just had a situation where, for whatever reason, our Quest Haven Park is the one that everybody likes to take their forerunners and make donuts in the middle of the park, and it, then we have to spend money to reseed it and restrict it so that the people can't use it. We just had a situation. We didn't have a Ring camera, but I will certainly tell you that there's not a street in San Alejo that doesn't have Ring cameras somewhere in the house. But we had, we knew when the car went. We had an idea what the car was. The car left, went up Quest Haven, went to San Alejo Road, made a right, and sped out of town. Well, if we knew it was at 11:30 on a Thursday, and then he got caught by the camera, which would be up by the Double Peak School, we could go to the sheriff and say, "Listen, we've got an eyewitness as to what happened, and this is the car. It's up to them to review it and see if it's, in fact, caught." But that's exactly what we believe will help you to keep what, look, essentially, we're in a safe neighborhood, but we are getting more and more things like this happening. And this is a great way of solving the issue. I just, Lindsay said it, with all the surrounding areas now with cameras, the bad guys know that. And the bad guys, I think, are basically going to say, "Well, I'm not going to go to a neighborhood that's got that. I'm going to go to a neighborhood that doesn't have it." And in our case, there's, you know, it's 3,000 homes, a lot of targets. We have our own private service that goes around at night, and it does pick up things. But it is, it is not like this. This would certainly help, and I would thank the sheriff for his presentation. That was excellent. I almost wanted to record that, to show that to the, to the, to the members that do ask about this. So, basically, I'm just simply, I am, I hope you can approve this, and, because I believe that this will help solve crimes that do happen in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I did want to mention that we do have all of our City Council meetings recorded, so you can go on our website in the next few days, and you will be able to replay it so that you could share it with others, so you would have that. All right, thank you. Next up is Melissa Bustard, sorry. Should put my glasses on before I start reading things.
That's okay, everyone butchers my name. Good evening, my name is Melissa Bustarde. I am also on the Board of Directors for the San Alejo Hills Community Association, and I thank the sheriff so much for bringing this initiative to the city. We've been looking into LPR cameras for the past year due to concerns from our residents. Although we do have overall low crime rates, crime does happen, and although we feel like we're in a fairly safe community, unfortunately, we do become targets occasionally, and I wanted to share with you one particular story that happened in our community that was one of the initiatives for this, for our board, and that was that we had an attempted kidnapping about two years ago of two little girls. They were 10 years old, playing in the front yard. The mom was inside the house making dinner, and two guys pulled up in an SUV, they were, I would say, early twenties, and came over and started talking to these two girls. And these two girls basically violated every single rule that we teach our children, right? Don't talk to strangers. Don't take candy from strangers. These men offered them candy, and they sat there and took the candy from them. And fortunately, they tried to get the girls to come across the street into their car, and the girls fortunately didn't, and the two guys got scared off and drove off. We had pictures of these guys. We had their vehicle on camera, but all of our home security cameras, they're not good enough. They can't pick up license plates, and because of that, these two individuals were never caught. But it caused a lot of fear in our community. Are our children safe to go play out in the front yard anymore? Is it safe to let them walk home from school? And so, to have a tool like this in our city is really important, not only to give the sheriffs the utilities to solve these crimes, and if something like this happens, to find these individuals and get them off the street, but also to deter the crimes so that they don't come here to begin with. I know it's not foolproof. It's not going to get rid of everything, but it would be an amazing peace of mind for members of our community. So, we urge your support in approving LPR cameras for the city of San Marcos. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Okay, council discussion. Councilmembers in LA.
Thank you, captains, for the presentation, and it was very comprehensive, and I think covered probably a lot of the questions that I had. But I did want to clarify, there's, you talked about a couple, a couple of different programs there. The Safe Cities, the program that links up with the home and business cameras, that's completely voluntary, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. Can you share, or do you know kind of rough, high-level participation that you have with that program in other cities that are participating?
That's a great question. It's in the hundreds, and it all depends on the outreach, the availability of cameras, and sometimes it comes down to how new the systems are. So, if we're dealing with systems that are relatively old, they don't integrate very well into the system. So, if it's something within the last four to five years, then it's much easier, and we get higher participation levels.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a great option to offer our residents, just from a public safety standpoint, and a way for them to collaborate with our law enforcement partners. And so, I'm actually a little surprised that it's in the hundreds and not the thousands, but hopefully with, you know, pushing it out there more and getting more cities involved in that, it'll get, it'll get used more frequently. As far as the license plate recognition readers, I, I want... I, one of the first meetings I had after I got elected to the city council was with some concerned residents in San Leao Hills in particular, and they had brought that to me at that time. And of course, you know, it takes a little bit of time to kind of work through processes and get to the point that we are tonight. But I'm glad that they came today, tonight. Thank you for sharing your concerns. Appreciate that. I'm all for it. I think it's going to be a big benefit, not just for San Leao, but for, I think there's applications throughout San Marcos where it would be beneficial. As far as the pricing, and this might be a question for either Michelle or even Helen, and if you don't have the answer tonight, it's okay. If a community or an HOA wanted to move more quickly on something like this and fund the application in their, in their specific neighborhood, would they have that option? Because I know, you know, we had some presenters earlier from our budget review committee, and, you know, funds are tight, and so it may take some time to implement this. But is there, is there a way for either getting grant money through different sources or having the HOAs, you know, fund their areas themselves?
I think, I think the city attorney and I would have a strong preference towards grant funding. We have been given a number of resources to start exploring from the sheriff's department. So staff is going through to mine to see if we can find some grant funding dollars. And then Donna does a great job flipping the couch cushions, and we'll continue to try to find funding in the hopes that spending the smaller amount of money that this will cost the city could save us from adding deputies in the future. So there is definitely a cost benefit to this form of modern policing. And I think we could probably have a deeper dive into private funding, but that's complicated, and I think the preference would be grant funding.
That makes sense. And I appreciate that, and I think that, I think you're, I think you're spot on. Just like private industry and, and, you know, just about everything in our lives today, we're augmenting technology to really enhance and make things more efficient. And I think there is an opportunity to use this new technology to drive some cost savings across our public safety programs. And so from that standpoint, there, it may, it may balance out.
Yes, I think it's a valid point to add that we haven't added any sheriff's deputies over the last decade, despite how much we've grown. And yet, the sheriff's department continues to provide such exceptional service that we are the 12th safest city. That just, that information just came out. So, in the state, 12th safest city in the state, not adding any deputies outside of school resource offices over the last decade. So I think anything we can do to help the sheriff's department without incurring the cost of a full deputy is certainly helpful to the budget.
Absolutely, I agree, and we appreciate everything that our, our law enforcement partners do to help and keep us safe. And we are very proud. I know the mayor talks about it, and all, but all five of us talk about how proud we are with how safe our city is. And I think it's 12th in the, in the state, but it's one, two, or three, kind of bounces around the county, you know, every year. And it's nice to be on the top of that list, so thank you so much. The last thing I'll say, just because with anything like this, there's, you know, I'm sure we will hear some feedback that, about privacy and some concerns around that. And I really liked in the presentation how you addressed, you know, the personal information, the passengers inside the vehicle, and, and the data's only maintained for 30 days. I think there's a lot of safeguards that are built into this program around privacy, and I think that's really important to me, and I appreciate that.
Councilmember Musgrove.
Thank you for the presentation. Captain Lawrence, real quickly, I noticed the, with the exception of National City and some of our contracts, we have everyone covered in the county. And very nice to see that the cities along the 78 corridor, starting with Carlsbad, Oceanside, and then working all the way to Escondido, are a party to this. When we say we're not sharing, are we not sharing live feed? Does this require that the data... So instrumental data, if you're looking for a particular vehicle, would that have to be still broadcast out at the comm center to the other agencies? So that they would, so an Escondido officer would not be able to pull up a feed from San Marcos or Vista or Encinitas? Does that sound about right?
Thank you for the question. Let me clarify, are we specifically speaking about the ALPR data?
Yes.
So currently, we're not sharing with them live feeds. So they would not be able to log into the system and obtain that data their own, on their own.
So we could, we would put it into our database, and then our communication center could then share it with the other centers? Like traditionally, how it gets broadcast out?
In the, that's a great question. In the instance of, let's say, an Amber Alert, if the vehicle was scanned by one of our cameras, absolutely. Our communication center has access to this data. They would see it pop up in front of their face, and they would put out a, be on the lookout to all the agencies, either North Command or South Command, depending on what part of the county we are in. It's more along the lines of investigators after the fact. They don't, other agencies don't have the ability to dive into our data. So if it's a risk to the community or an officer's safety issue, our communication center is going to announce that this vehicle scanned here, and it's going this direction, but it's not available to be seen in person at a desk by an investigator. That answers your question.
It does. A scenario just popped into my head when Ms. Bustarde, did I say that right? Bustarde. The, the incident two years ago with the attempt, kidnapping. If we took that information and the very basic automobile information, and given the presentation you offered, that information could then be uploaded into the LPR system, and cameras that were, and points of ingress and egress from that location could be scanned to see if a vehicle same or similar is passing through. Is that a realistic scenario?
Absolutely. That's correct.
So it goes beyond just what happened right here. We now have effectively, depending on deployment, a perimeter on the city to show if that type vehicle was going by. Then we would have, also have an accurate display on a license plate, whether it's a stolen vehicle, stolen plate. We still have something more than just, you know, the neighbors saying, "Well, we didn't get a good Ring camera image."
Yes. And thankfully, to push a little bit beyond that and answer a potential other question that's going to come, the other agencies that are logging on to Flock, they do share their data with us. So we're a little selfish right now, but we have their data, as well as council member previously asked about private HOAs being able to purchase these cameras. They actually are. Flock does work with HOAs and private entities such as retail centers, as long as it's facing an area that is, someone could stand out on the street corner and record with their cellphone legally. This video, this camera essentially fits the same mold, and as long as the HOA or that entity elects to share the data with us, we receive that data as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, deputy mayor?
Thank you. So I have a few questions. Do you use your crime statistics to figure out the location? I'm talking about the license plate readers. Do you use your own crime statistics to figure out where the locations should be? Or how are you going to? How is that determined?
That's a great question. And Captain Ralph will be working with not only his crime analysts at the station, but also the detectives in the boots on the ground, using information-led policing to figure out where the best and most effective location for these devices would be. And again, because of their nature of not being tied into the infrastructure, if crime trends adjust, which they often do, we can pivot and move to another location. So they're not stuck somewhere for all eternity. We can move them around relatively easily.
And so the license plate readers, those would likely be ramps? Or is it about getting in and out of the city? Or could it be specific streets? What are they?
Typically, and I'll let Captain Ralph answer after I give my two cents, which it may be the same. But typically, we're looking at egress and ingress points to the city.
Okay.
I can share with Encinitas, because they're familiar with me from last year. 56% of the people arrested in that city lived outside of the city. So over half of the people committing crimes that were actually arrested don't live there. And so our interest was capturing those coming in and out of the city because we knew that the ones committing crimes didn't live there. So we didn't need a camera right in the heart of the city necessarily. We needed to see them leaving or when they came in on the perimeters.
Okay. And councilmember Musgrove touched on this. I was going to ask about the coordination. So we have Escondido on one side of us. But our information wouldn't, if I'm understanding what you said correctly, our information would not necessarily feed to them. But if you had an incident happening, you could do some sort of coordination if you have a sense that somebody is heading, you know, east or west?
That's a great question. You hit it on the head, yes. So Escondido officer or detective would not have the ability to view on their computer this data. It would only be voiced by our communication center if it was a public safety issue related to a child being at risk.
Right.
Public safety risk where there's potential harm or an officer's safety risk.
Okay. And what other cities are now considering this also? Because I see you have eight, eight PDs, and then we have four contract cities. I think there's, is it eight or nine contract cities? So are others considering this also?
Yes. It probably would be speaking out of line if I said who, to let their councils bring that forward to their communities. But yes, there are other
Okay.
contract cities that are considering this.
And so we have 12 existing cities. What are there, 18, 19 cities in the? 18. 18 cities. So 12 of them, if we move forward 13, then pretty much the whole, if everybody eventually comes on board, the whole county could be covered by this and may have a major reduction in, throughout the county with this. How, so what, how are you going to analyze this periodically to see how this is working and whether it's, there's a cost benefit to maybe adding more?
That's a great question. So at the North Colson Station, what we did is we set up a spreadsheet that kept track of every success story. So every time a detective or a deputy were to use it either in the field actively for a call or closing an investigation using this data, we logged it. We're also to, able to take a look at the case closure rates, which I had mentioned in the presentation. And 5%, again, it's small, sounds like a small number, but it's actually quite significant. And that was just in the six months of the first launch of only seven cameras in the city. It was a pilot program.
Okay.
Actually going to be there tomorrow night, and they're probably going to do 17 more.
Okay. And then over to the voluntary homeowner security cameras, if you will. How does that outreach typically happen? Is that something, the city does an outreach to the residents to let them know it's available? Do you, you do the outreach? Is there a combination? Because it sounds like there might be a lot of interest in that.
Another great question. We try to do that in collaboration, and I'm sure Captain Ralph would as well, working with the city's PIO, to put that out not only on our social media platforms, your social media platforms, but during the in-person community events, whether it's coffee with the deputy, ice cream with the deputy. We used to do tacos with the deputy. It just, wherever we're welcome in communities, we will gladly be there and talk about whatever issue. And this would be one of them as well.
Okay. I think that's all my questions.
Deputy Mayor, if I can chime in just?
Yes, yes.
I can't find it in my notes here, but I seem to recall when I was preparing for tonight, looking through our packet, there's a website called, is it SanMarcosafecities.com?
So that, that website, great question. That's, website is not public yet. It is already prepped, and it's Safe San Marcos.
We needed to go through this process first.
Correct. So we have it ready to go. It looks very similar to one of the slides that I had up there. It includes additional information. But we have that ready.
The reason why I brought that up, that would be part of the outreach and
Right, good point.
communication to the, the community.
Absolutely, and we can link that with the city's webpage as well as the station's public facing webpage.
And I had it right. It was SanMarcosafecities?
Safe San Marcos.
Safe San Marcos, okay. Dot com.
Okay. Councilmember Nunez?
Thank you, mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I do have a follow-up question about the point about the website and what will be accessible. Specifically with the, with the sharing or the businesses, individuals that will be sharing the cameras, is that something that will be available? Let's say not per se any identifying information about the individual or the business that's sharing, but are we going to be able to see where these cameras are located that are being shared, if you will?
Those won't be available for the public to view, who's sharing their data with us, just out of concerns for retaliation or whatever may come of that. They are available for sheriff's staff to see which cameras are available.
So I won't be able to see, for instance, if I go to somewhere in a map right where I live, I won't be able to see what cameras might be, might be shared?
That's a great question, and correct. You would not be able to see, log in and see your neighbor's feed, essentially, for their own privacy. It's just for law enforcement. And again, only if they volunteer, so this is completely voluntary.
Okay. So I'm having a hard time understanding, really, what, what the council's being asked to approve today, today in terms of, there's some sharing that's happening now, right? So, so I think there's a baseline of what's being shared, and then what will be added, or what will be new, or what? I'm having a hard time distinguishing that.
Okay, no problem. So what we are asking tonight is this, your council's authorization.
So can I, can I start? It would help me. What is, what is, what's the policy now? Or the policies, or what's being shared? Because you mentioned that there are individuals and businesses that will share cameras, and they are accessible to, to the sheriffs, or I think to other law enforcement agencies. Did I understand that correctly?
So if we're speaking about the license plate readers, currently, there are no license plate reader cameras in San Marcos. So part of the request this evening is to allow us to begin that program.
But if I, if I can ask, so I understand, but there are these other jurisdictions, these other cities that have cameras that we have access to, or the sheriff does?
Correct.
Yes? Okay. So in terms of, so I'm trying to understand what is already in place? What are the agreements with these agencies? And then, because I do show that we're approving sort of policies that are going to be implemented, or are these just examples? Or I'm trying to understand what the changes are for what's already in place?
Sure. So related to the license plate readers, again, what we're asking is to allow us to place license plate reading, recognition cameras within the city of San Marcos to assist the San Marcos Sheriff's deputies with their investigations. You are correct in the assumption that other cities do already have this technology as well, and they are sharing that data with us. It's not being shared to the public. It's actually protected by some of the CPRA rules because it does involve individuals, PII, their personal identifying information. It can't be released to the public, so it's safe from there. You don't have to worry about an individual going forward and asking, "I want every car that scanned under this camera that..." No, stop right there. The government code protects us from that. With relation to the Safe Cities Initiative, that's also asking if the sheriff may place, one, the cameras within the city. If that's decided against, that's fine. The second part would be allowing us to start the initiative that gives citizens the ability to register their cameras with us, to tell us where they are so that we can communicate better and have that information available. Or the exclusive user, which gives us the live feed. So currently, that is not happening in San Marcos. And so this would give us the ability to initiate that program and move forward with it.
So I'm assuming there's other cities, or if you know of the jurisdictions that are listed on here, do they already have those, the safe programs in place?
The cities that I listed do, and those are the cities of Lemon Grove, Santee, Poway, Encinitas, Solana Beach, and Del Mar.
Okay. So do we have access to those?
We, as the sheriff's depart... Sorry.
No, 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 thank you. Yes, the sheriffs.
Yes.
Can you repeat those cities again? Because I don't see those listed, the ones that have the safe program. Can you repeat those cities again? Because I don't see those listed, the ones that have the safe programs.
Of course. Lemon Grove, Poway, Santee, Encinitas, Solana Beach, Del Mar. And I left out two of our unincorporated areas that are live, Alpine and Fallbrook.
Okay, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
One of the, the questions that I also have, when you mentioned the benefits of the ALPR cameras, is the enhanced safety by agency collaborations. So I'm trying to think through, obviously, we've been talking about the collaboration amongst the jurisdictions, the police departments and the contracted cities. But what other agencies are we collaborating with? Like, for instance, one of the, that comes to mind is, for instance, is there collaboration like with the school district?
We wouldn't share the ALPR data with the school district, no. However, if they had cameras and they chose to share the data with us, we could incorporate that data into our investigations. But we are not sharing this data. We're actually prohibited from sharing it with non-law enforcement entities. We cannot sell it commercially. We cannot provide it to any members of the public. We try to protect it as much as possible. We're cognizant that this is a very concerning privacy issue if it were just to be released to anyone, so.
So what are some of the other agencies where there is collaboration?
Other law enforcement agencies, so.
Or maybe non-law enforcement agencies?
No law, no non-law enforcement agencies have access to our data.
But in terms of the agency sharing with the sheriffs?
That would either be other law enforcement agencies, mainly county and other cities that have their own police departments. And then private entities that do have their own cameras such as retail stores, HOAs, some schools. Casinos have them in our east county. They have the ability to share that data with us.
So would those agreements fall under the safe agreements or are these agreements that, so I'm trying to, are there existing agreement now and then we're going to build on those existing agreements? Or what does that look like?
The data related to the ALPRs is completely separate from the Safe Cities. So just completely separate those two.
Okay.
We're just presenting them tonight out of efficiency together. So those, those programs don't communicate with each other at all, totally separate. So back to your question on, again, who we're sharing with already. I reiterated just other law enforcement and it's very limited or none at all. And we are able to intake other law enforcement data and private data if they also utilize ALPR cameras. Because they can be used by the public and they can share that data with us.
Okay. So going back to, as I'm thinking about, for instance, like the school districts, are there any existing agreements with any of our school districts in the county?
None that I'm aware of for ALPR data.
Okay. And then what about for the, for the Safe Cities?
We do have agreements for registered users that school districts register the cameras with us so that we know where they are and that they become available to us, yes.
Okay. And is that with all the contracted cities or?
That's a.
You're aware?
Sorry.
Are these contracts with the contracted cities?
Since the school districts are typically their own entity, it would be with the individual school district where we would have those contracts and MOUs in place for this.
Okay. I, I understand. Thank you.
Did you have any other questions, Councilmember?
I do, Mayor. One moment. On page three of the, the presentation, I think it's slide number six. On the data sharing and privacy at the bottom where it says ALPR data is kept for one year and there's an asterisk to that, what's the asterisk referred to?
That's a great question. So currently FLOC only keeps the ALPR data for 30 days. So if we do not use it for a criminal investigation, it is erased after that. And if we need it for a criminal investigation, we're able to download that, that image that I showed you in a previous slide. That all it contains is the photograph of the vehicle, date, time, location, and direction of travel, that one.
And, and you mentioned that, that we have a choice of either doing the live feed nor recording or doing, keeping the data for 30 days, correct?
So that was again, related to the Safe Cities Initiative.
Okay.
This is separate.
Okay. So there's no recording, no saving of data for the ALPR system?
There is recording of the data and it is only kept for 30 days as well. So Safe Cities also has a 30-day timeline.
Okay.
It's expensive to store data. We don't want to keep it if we don't need it. So we just get rid of it, if that makes sense.
Okay. So I was under the impression that we had a couple of different options, but it's 30 days?
30 days.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
The other questions that I have are really related to the, in terms of our timing. If our council approves to move forward with these requests, so I understand we don't have the monies to pay. We don't have the funding, the allocation for, to pay for, for the cameras. So I'm trying to think through the timeline, what that looks like. So we approved today. At some point, we're hoping that we do find funding. So then I'm thinking, how will our residents know that we have funding? Now we're going to kick in a gear. What, what happens then? Like, what does our timeline look like? How will our residents know? Can I input? Can our residents input into the whole process? Will there be a website? Will there be, how many community meetings where they will happen, how they will happen? So it would be helpful for me to think through the timeline.
And I'm, I'm happy to take that one. Some of the programming that we're discussing here tonight is, is free of charge. So we could, we have the URL standing by. So if we decide to move forward with the camera sharing, we can begin that as soon as we can get it up and running. I think that gives us an opportunity to start the outreach once we've got the website live. Obviously, we don't want to do any outreach prior to council confirming that this is your, your policy direction that you want us to move in. We can light up that website. We can start the outreach and the community can start to share their feeds. The license plate readers, we do need to determine if we can get some grant funding, if we can find some funding to move forward. And there's a lag time on ordering those cameras. They, they're not just immediately available. So that, even if we had the money today, we do have some outreach time built in. And I think if the council does take action as a body tonight to give direction for us to move forward with this program, I would love to hear from each of you on what type of outreach you would like, citywide or in each of your districts. Because I think it might look a little different depending on if you have any specific needs. I know we've discussed, would you like some Spanish outreach within the community? So we can get that scheduled. The sheriff's department does a tremendous job of providing their time and, and resources and being available to the community. So I think they'll follow our lead. So as a body, you can determine what that looks like.
Thank you for that. That's really helpful. Thank you. No other questions for me?
Okay, Deputy Mayor, you said you had one more question?
Yes. So in looking at this, there's, there's two things, but there's really three things. There's the license plate readers. There's the Safe Cities, which is the voluntary homeowner. And then there's, as also part of the Safe Cities is the, your sheriff's cameras, correct? That are no cost to us because the sheriffs pay for five of them?
That is correct.
Okay. So, and then on the Safe Cities cameras, you decide those areas where they could be, like for instance, I can, you know, envision a park issue in Santa La Jo going on or a park issue in another area of town or something like that. You would put these cameras in those high situation areas and then you might move them around. Is that correct? They're, they're, I think they, I think I remember seeing one. They attach to something and then it's easy to move them to another location if you need to?
That is correct. Typically, we'll put them on a light pole or some other infrastructure that's already in place.
Okay, okay. And then I think the other issue with these is the, you had mentioned about record or not record. If, if you're going to go to the extent of, of installing these somewhere and we're combating crime, I don't see why we wouldn't want them recorded, would we?
That question is up for you to decide. We leave it in your hands, but we would appreciate if they did record.
Yeah. Because you only save it for 30 days.
Correct.
And it, yeah.
Can you, I have a, and there's a cost differential, correct?
In relation to which?
The recording or, or not recording?
No. For the Safe City cameras, we cover all the cost. So there's no cost to the city related to recording or not recording, so.
So the Lemon Grove situation was simply a decision from the council. They did not want them recorded. It would not have cost anymore?
That is correct.
Okay. That was my follow-up question too. Thank you.
And I have, are they recording now? Lemon Grove?
No.
Okay.
Okay. So I think all of this is very useful to our community. I would, you know, if, if council agrees, I, I would like to direct staff to find the money sooner than later because it's only going to help the community. And it's going to, I, I think the, the, the cost differential is, is huge. So my, I, I would make a motion that we, I'm sorry, are there any other questions?
I was, I didn't even go yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
But I'll, but I'll let you make your motion when we're, when we're ready, yes.
Mayor, if I may, I do have one, one more question. In terms of liability, because we're going to have private businesses and individuals sharing, if there is any kind of dispute, any kind of lawsuit of any alleged privacy violations or any, will the city have any liability in those disputes?
I'm not a lawyer, so I can't answer that entirely. However, cooperation and participation in this program is with the sheriff's department. And so when you are signing up for this program, there are some legalese that you need to read to and click the button that you accept certain instances or responsibilities. So too much for me to explain this evening here, but that has been worked out.
Any other questions?
I would note that the MOU actually has the sheriff's, the county indemnifying the city for anything arising out of Safe San Marcos.
The short answer.
There we go.
Okay. Well, I for one, safety has always been one of my highest priorities in the city. I think taking any step forward to give tools to our law enforcement is really important. I, I personally would, would want the information recorded for the 30 days. I think it makes a lot of sense. And currently, I actually have a ring system myself. I have eight cameras. So I have some in my backyard, some on my side yards, and then some in the front. So my question would be, I could share just certain cameras or how, how does that part work?
Yes. Great question. We don't want anything that's in a private area at all. And there's checks and balances related to that as well. We don't just blanket accept all invitations. So we have somebody who is physically looking at the system and what the feed would be and we are excluding those on our own. We don't want any part in that. So it would be just your public facing cameras that don't also violate anyone else's privacy. If your camera was facing a little bit too much in someone else's yard or something like that, we're not going to take the risk of accepting that.
Yeah. So what I have, for instance, I have like blackout areas when I feel like it's, it looks too much at my neighbor's front door because it's getting the, the street. So I do like blackout thing. It's the privacy zones is what it's called on Ring. And, you know, currently I have gotten alerts. So alerts come across to me. And I've gotten alerts that tell me, for instance, last week when there was the ice cream with the, with the deputies, it actually came across. So I know that there are some sort of alerts that the sheriff's department is already giving Ring users. And I, I don't know how that access works, but, but there already are alerts and, hey, did you see this? Like, it's already coming to Ring camera owners that have Ring systems that are, that are, and I forget how many days. I want to say it's, my information I think is recorded for 90 days. And I know that I could share it with whoever, but as a, you know, like if you downloaded it and then sent it across. So I know that, that'll actually be an easy thing that you start sending alerts because it's already happening. And then I had a question on the license plate readers specifically. I saw what it looked like. If it comes across, like it shows, I'm just, you know, A, B, C, D, E, F, G as a license plate and then it's a white Honda, but that doesn't actually go with that white Honda? Does, or you know, that license plate is for a black truck or something like that, does it alert you that, oh, hey, this doesn't match up, that car description, it's not, it's not correct, it's not factually correct? Does it tell you that when you, when it, you know, pulls the data?
It's a great question and it does not. And the reason why it does not is that, that system does not have access to CLETS. So it is not running a license plate to tell us what type of car it belongs to. So another layer of privacy protection. It has no communication with CLETS and the DMV.
Okay. So you would have to then look at it and then you would do a quick scan and then you would see that it doesn't match up and it's incorrect?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. All right. And then, let's see, uh, let's see if I have any other questions. No, I think that was, I think that was it. I, I really, I really liked the program. I, as I said, you know, safety's always been the highest priority, giving you all the tools to do your job. I mean, we certainly, I, I think it does take a village. I say that pretty often about a lot of different things, but it does. It takes a village. We all have our part in it. Sharing the cameras, I think, is a, is a big deal, especially when you've had a situation. I was recently at the District Attorney Citizens of Courage and, you know, the Ring footage helped, you know, with solving a crime here in San Marcos. So I know it does work. I mean, it definitely does work. That person shared their, their information and it did help. So I, I think it is a big deal. So anyway, Deputy Mayor, I'm not going to steal your thunder. Did you want to, did you want to go ahead and make your motion?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve this item. And I would also, I don't know if this is an addition, Helen, or how we do this. I think we should allow the sheriffs to record the Safe City cameras that they're going to use in their locations.
I'll second that motion. I was going to make sure you had that either. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any notes? No abstentions? Okay. Unanimous decision on that.
You for your time.
Yeah, thank you. Really appreciate the very thorough introduction on that. Okay, moving on to second oral communications. I don't think I have any speakers. Let's see. Sandec, our new director is going to be starting on June 17th. That is Mario Orso. He is coming from Sandec, I mean, I'm sorry, from Caltrans. He will be starting, I think he's going on vacation or something before he starts because it is a big job and it's going to take everything that he has. We passed the last We passed the last time a $1.3 billion budget. I voted no against it for a few reasons. One is that still many of our transnet projects have not been prioritized, and other projects were being pushed forward. And then there was also $4.3 million for raises, though it didn't really, it didn't really specify who those employees would be. And I think retention of our employees is important, but it was predicted to be covering about 140 employees, but not 30,000 across the board. But it could be 30,000 across the board, but that's not what it was predicted to be. I think when San Diego County residents, many of them are actually having a hard time putting food on their table. I feel like that's a bad look for us to be spending money like that. So I did vote against that. I think those were the main high-level things. It was a long meeting, though. We had closed session. That was long, too. A lot, a lot of stuff we were talking about. Was there anything I missed?
Budget was a big thing.
Yeah, the budget was a big thing. Okay. Councilmember Musgrove was there as well. Okay, moving on to the League of California Cities. Councilmember?
Sannella.
Sannella, you went to that, correct?
And Councilwoman Nunez was there as well.
Okay.
Do you want me to kick off?
No.
Okay, sure. Not much to report. It was a pretty typical Cal Cities meeting where we had, most of it was taken up by just some legislative updates from Sacramento. There seemed to be, I don't know if they do themes, but there seemed to be a lot of new legislation that the, that Cal Cities was taking positions on around housing mandates, which I hadn't heard. I know they've been around for a while, but I hadn't heard like about new legislation that's giving the state even more teeth to enforce the local entities to approve housing. So that, there was a lot of conversation around that. It seemed like Cal Cities was taking, you know, approach that they were opposing a lot of those, just kind of, I think, more focused on local control. And then there wasn't all, they said that they needed more clarification as to what the bills, really what their purpose was, and then how they would enforce it. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Maria, but one of them has like $50,000, was it per day or per month, fines if cities didn't comply, basically?
Yes.
I can't remember if it was day or month, but either way, it's a lot of money. And so Cal Cities is fighting that up in Sacramento. And then we had a presentation essentially all around how local governments are implementing their climate change plans and their initiatives and kind of building a more resiliency in those plans. And they had a couple of guest speakers that talked about that.
I had a quick question about the $50,000 per day. What is, what is that, what are those fines for?
Essentially, and I don't have the law, the
Oh, sorry.
proposed law in front of me, but, and I'll do some research, and we can also reach out to Catherine and try to get an update for you on that. But essentially, there's a law that's pending in Sacramento that's around housing mandates. And if cities don't comply with that mandate, then they can be fined $50,000. It's either per day or per month. I don't know if one of my colleagues has more information on that law, but.
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but Catherine Hill will be circulating the update, the latest update with that information. So I think as soon as we see it being circulated, we can flag that.
Okay, because it would be interesting to know a few things. First of all, is it $50,000 per day per unit that you, that you?
I don't think it, I don't think it was per unit. That'd be astronomical.
Well, I know, but I know, well, you know, there are, there definitely are some, oh, gosh, I want to say it might have been SB 67? No, it was actually 4067 or something like that. I don't, I can't remember. A few years ago, that you could get fined up to $10,000 per unit if you did not, if you, if you denied a project being approved. So it was, it was pretty hefty. I mean, it's not per day, but it was still per unit, which was, is a big deal. Yeah, when we get back, can we get a, or can we get an update for the next meeting? I think it's important for people to understand. I mean, for me, it's always like, okay, local control, first of all. How do we stay out of the state's hit list of wanting, you know, of getting charged? Because we don't want to use our taxpayer money to do stupid things and actually, you know, because we're not following the state law. One other thing, too, is, well, when you find, when you find out all those, all that information, it would be, it would be good to know. And the Rena goes through 2029. We were supposed to build 3,116 homes during that time in the different income levels, very low, low, moderate, and market? Or I forget how they put it. Anyway, I was on that subcommittee at Sandeg. And kind of interestingly enough, many of the cities that actually were fighting the mandates don't do any, or, no, I'm sorry, pushing the mandate, saying, yeah, yeah, it's okay if the state does this, or the cities that don't actually build the housing. And by the way, one thing I would like to note is the city doesn't actually build the housing. It's the private development that actually builds the housing. So even on the affordable housing. So anyway, an important note on that. But when you get that information, if we can get that back. And then North County Transit District.
We meet, we meet on Thursday.
Okay, North County Dispatch, JPA.
We'll be meeting later this month, so I'll have an update in June. I do want to go back, though, to the League of Cities and put, Phil, a little bit on the spot with the ILG presentation and the sustainability. They did provide some resourcage. They did announce that they're going to have a seminar to make sure the cities are ready to apply for any, any grant funding that might become available. So I'll share some of those dates if we can get looped in to see if it might be something that we should be looking at. So I'll circulate that so we can make sure, if it makes sense to have city staff join any of those seminars.
I'll bet you Michelle's already on this because she knows how much I love OPM, which is other people's money. We talk about it all the time.
Yes, Phil, we'll follow up and make sure that we do get those options on the calendar for the council. And we'll spare Councilmember Sannella the research project, so we'll make sure that staff does that research, and we'll get it sent out to the council.
All right, thank you. Clean Energy Alliance, Councilmember Musgrove.
I'll let you look at this, Mayor, while I give you mine. So we had our meeting, third week of April, and we have signed two new professional service agreements, one with Pacific Energy Advisors and the other one with a new gen. And they help us to identify clean energy sources to bring into our grid. We had a regulatory update from Keys and Fox. And at that time, we were discussing the potential for the minimum rate from the CPUC on electricity. And that has now been passed by the CPUC. And it's, I think it's $24.15 is the basic. They're lowering the cost per kilowatt hour. So if you're a very, very low user, you will see a rate reduction. If you're a very high user, you'll see a rate reduction. If you're in that middle, you will see an increase. Because while you will receive reduced rates, it will be overcome by the minimum fee that you weren't already paying. And if you're a solar user, you'll definitely see a bill.
Okay. Well, I was just reading what you showed me about that. It's SB 1037, which is back to, sorry, we're back to the affordable housing. It doesn't say, though, how long you're going to get this violation.
And it doesn't say specifically.
So weird.
Just for nonconformance to housing laws.
Yeah, that's weird. I don't get that.
That was the gist of the opposition, too, is that it wasn't very clear.
No, it's very, very, well, the state, we can't, yeah, we're not doing that. Okay, City Council Business Visits. Bushakan Budo Kaiokai?
Oh, very good.
Mm-hmm. It was a, started in 1986. Bushakan Budo Kaiokai was formed by Franco. Oh, well, you say this so well. Why don't you say it? Go ahead. You like it, yeah.
Franco Sanguenetti.
Yeah, he really is excited to say that. With a mission to preserve and promote the true essence of the traditional Okinawan martial arts and to implement moral values that martial arts teach outside of the physical aspect. Go ahead, say it again.
Ah, I'll pass.
Okay, he established the Budo Center as a nonprofit organization to be able to request grants and donations to support the local schools and dojos affiliated with low financial resources. Bushakan Dojo is about, is about 6,000 square feet and boasts a traditional raised wood platform for training. So it was really beautiful. As you notice, we don't have any shoes on because you're not allowed to wear shoes inside. So there we were, walking around. And it honestly is, is great because with the raised floor, when you're jumping around and whatnot, you're not going to get shin splints, which is one of the things that they were talking about. But you can pick up where I left off. And, oh, and behind us are some of the weapons. The weapons are not to, like, go out and try to hurt someone. It's, it's part of the sparring technique and part of the actual protection of yourself. That's where the history of the actual weapons came about. Did you want to?
So Howard is in the Black Gi, and he specializes in the weapons. And he was explaining to me, so over my shoulder, those are just staffs. But it goes back to the old days when the, I guess it was the government in Japan took all the weapons away from the Okinawans. There's this different kind of relationship between Okinawa and mainland Japan. So those are essentially farmers' implements to weed and hoe and to move things around, so they use those to fight. And off, that's Franco on the left, to the left of him, those are also used in defense and fighting. And those are just oars that we use for a boat that they have modified. And that was how traditionally they developed their weapon systems because they, those were standard items that were around.
I was actually just expecting you to sign up before we left because I thought you found it fascinating, the whole, the whole background of that. Yes, no?
I'm not, I'm not a violent person, Mayor.
No, it has nothing to do with violence. It has to do with the, you know, whatever. Okay, so the training emphasizes tradition, purity, and accountability. See, all things you like. Dojo teaches Japanese language to students and coordinates an annual trip to Japan for teachers and students. You want to add in there?
Yep. He makes a very clear correlation for all of his students. He reaches out to the schools, reaches out to the parents. If the students are not maintaining their grades, then being able to continue with the dojo hangs in the balance. And he makes that very clear to them. And he gets permission from the parents to maybe go a little bit beyond what you might find from an after-school instructor, that if they're not doing this, this is what I will do. And the parents will agree because they can see the change in their kids. And so the kids are very motivated to abide by the rules, be respectful, because that is one of the things they teach. The two primary things I would see are discipline and respect.
And they don't get to go to the next level, to the next staff color.
And he doesn't have 30 different colors. He has five.
Oh, wait, is it five?
Five.
Four, five. Anyway, it was very interesting. Go ahead.
They do have a long-term goal. They want to open up a cultural center in San Marcos. They're still looking for property. They have, Sensei Sanguenetti has a vision, what it would look like, what it would encompass, the services provided. It would require a pretty significant piece of land, some investment, and some partnerships. So we, when I say we, it was, yeah, the city. We'll certainly work with him to try and help him out. But it is going to be a longer-term venture. So he is, he's focused on getting that done. These are the three masters that teach at the school right there. That's about it.
We're gonna, also, it's a longstanding business and an asset to the youth programming in the city. They've gone to, they've actually taught at several schools and different programs.
Yeah, they did at one time have an agreement with San Marcos Unified School to provide classes on-site. And that's, since it's gone away. And if you're curious, they're at 1945 South Rancho Santa Fe in the area of Melrose and Diamond, down by the Business District.
Yep, okay. Moving on, the San Marcos Creek District project.
Well, this afternoon, we, we had almost 100% success, not quite. So the, we had, as of last council meeting, three
Wait, what success are we talking about?
Well, last council meeting, we had three traffic signals that were still on flash. Right now, we have two traffic signals that are functioning appropriately and one traffic signal that is still on flash. So the staff and contractors are going to continue to work on, they've narrowed it down to the wiring on the Via Vera Cruz traffic signal. So all resources are concentrated on that signal to get them working effectively. So they, they had a goal of tonight. We almost hit it, and they're going to continue to work on Via Vera Cruz. But the other two traffic signals are operational. They're working. And our traffic engineer has the ability to update the programming and get the signals working smoothly in that area over the next couple of days for the ones that are active.
Well, somebody really wants for her birthday in two days to have all of those lights working. So Thursday, it'd be great if we could get them all working by then. Everyone will appreciate it. It'll be a gift for everyone in the community.
Put a bow on the traffic signal.
Well, let's, let's hope for that. It's the small things in life that really mean a lot. Anyway, council commentary. Any, any discussions?
Very, very brief, Mayor. I like to read the paper and find local residents who are highlighted in the sports section. Jace Nix, who is a senior at San Marcos High School, runs track. He won two sport, he's a two-sport senior standout, swept the Division One sprints at Del Norte High School, ran the season's best to capture the 100-meter dash in 10.68 seconds and the 221.71. And if you've ever been a sprinter, you know, those are very, very good times. So congratulations, Jace.
Wow, that's awesome. Anything else? Okay, with that, this meeting is adjourned.